Got it.
Oh, Kristy is here. Wasn't sure if she'd make it. Forward her the link too.
Thank you Nikki, I actually just sent you a text because I got out of my meeting a little early.
Yay. I'm sending you the link for the closed session too in your email.
Okay, perfect.
We're still reading on um Ray and Boom as well as I believe, I don't see Sarah. See Boom, letting him in. Message Ray.
Um Sarah is saying she's in the waiting room on Zoom. Is anybody able to let her in? Did she by chance join Teams? I'm wondering or maybe not.
I don't see her in the waiting room for this meeting. Maybe she's in the closed session? Hold on a second.
She texted me too and I just asked her if she clicked on the closed session link instead of open session.
And Ray's working on the like and then right now.
Yeah, she clicked on the closed session, I believe. I see her in my email there. Which I mean, we'll be in there shortly anyway, but.
There she is. Okay, she's in the reading room. It's the only one we're waiting on now is Ray, but I know he's I know he's getting to the link, so. Alright, everyone is here.
Good afternoon everyone. Um I will call us to order at 2:05 and begin with the land acknowledgement. The Altadena Library District acknowledges its presence on the traditional ancestral and unceded land of the Gabelino Tonga peoples. Altadena is located on the stolen homelands of the Hahamanga Tribal Band. The traditional territory of the Gabelino Tonga is referred to as Tobogar, which includes the areas currently known as Los Angeles County, Riverside County, West San Bernardino County, parts of Orange County, as well as the four Southern Channel Islands. Entities such as the US government and non-native settlers have subjected the Gabelino Tonga peoples to historic and continuing injustices including genocide, forced displacement, and cultural and linguistic erasure. Altadena Library commits to learning, educating, and informing its staff and residents of present-day Altadena about the rich histories, vibrant communities, and culture of the Gabelino Tonga people present and past through our collection development resources and program offerings. Okay, I will do a roll call. Trusty Capell.
Here.
Trusty Clark.
Here.
Trusty Lim.
Here.
Trusty Ruffin.
Here.
And I am here, okay? Um are there any items that need to be added to or modified to the closed session agenda? If no, can I get a motion to approve the closed session agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Trusty Capell.
Aye.
Trusty Clark.
Aye.
Trusty Lim.
Aye.
And Trusty Ruffin.
Aye.
And then I vote for me. Okay, is there any public comment for our agenda, closed session agenda? Catalina?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. So um I would like to have a motion for us to convene into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, vote. Trusty Capell.
Aye.
Trusty Clark.
Aye.
Trusty Lim.
Aye.
Trusty Ruffin.
Aye.
And I vote for me. Okay, so we will now recess into um closed session at 2:07 to address conference with legal counsel. Right, everyone should have a link. And I will see you there.
Send your email. Okay, thank you.
You too.
Wait in on Boone. Yes, okay, wanted to make sure. Yeah, sorry, I didn't say anything.
Okay, Boone is joined.
Okay, we are reconvening back into open session at three oh four P M. There is no reportable action from closed session. So we will move back into our agenda with uh reconvening a roll call. Looks like um so trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Ruffin.
I heard you say here, but I see you on here.
Yeah, trustee Clark.
Here.
And trustee Lim.
Here.
Okay, and I am here as well. Um is there any reordering of any agenda items for open session? And if not, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Seventeen.
One second.
Uh roll call vote, trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Trustee Lim.
Aye.
And an aye vote for me, thank you. Um Catalina, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
All right, then let's jump into our first item of new business, which is to review and consider requests of the L A County Auditor's Controller's Office of a waiver of the levy of special taxes of Alstina Library District C F D for the properties affected by the fire. Would there be any presentation on this?
I mean, I'm happy just to to share that we received the letter and all of the documentation that's in the agenda package from the county. I can't remember exactly when, but it was either early last week or the end of the week before that. The deadline to respond is this coming Friday, which is why we organized this special meeting. Um as you can see from the report that was put together by bond councilor Minal Shaw, uh it the preliminary numbers are in all of the parcels listed are three thousand ten um parcels that were reported at that point in time. Uh we're not sure because that's preliminary if that is sufficient information um in terms of what the the true fiscal impact will be. But it is up to the board today to decide whether or not we're gonna choose to you will choose to um continue to collect that that special tax lien, waive the the special tax lien or waive a percentage of it. So um in speaking with bond counsel and the information also provided in the report that we're in a fiscal um agent agreement uh that requires us to levy and collect the special tax. It is the recommendation by staff and our attorney that we not waive those collections. But um again, that's a decision for the board to make. Minal is here, I don't know if you want to add anything, Minal, or and we're here to answer any other questions the board may have.
Um then we have a recommendation by the staff in the district. Can I get a motion to move on that recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Hang on, sorry, real quick, we don't just point of order, we need to say what the like what the thing is, yeah, so so I think that what I hear is um a motion to um to not waive the collection of the special tax.
Okay, yep, so can I get a motion to move forward with the district's recommendate the staff and districts recommendation that the board deny the county's request for the waiver of the levy and collection of the special taxes within the C F D for fiscal year twenty four twenty five? And do I can I do I just continue with your our motion?
Can I just can I just clarify real quick? I just want to be real clear, so my reading of the letter is they're asking what we intend to do. They're not actually requesting that we waive it, but based upon legal counsels recommend legal counsels recommending that we not waive it because of various consequences if we were to do that.
Right, um under this the special taxes for the community when the district issued the bonds, they entered into an agreement called the fiscal agent agreement. Pursuant to the fiscal agent agreement, the district um is required and has covenanted that it will levy and collect special taxes um in an amount sufficient to pay debt service annually. If um this board chooses to uh waive the special tax uh levy, it um could cause a breach under that covenant and that agreement.
Thank you.
And Minal, what would potential
Waiting on Boone. Yes, okay, I wanted to make sure. Yeah, sorry, I didn't say anything. Okay, Boone is joined.
Okay, we are reconvening back into open session at three oh four P M. There is no reportable action from closed session. So we will move back into our agenda with uh reconvening a roll call. Looks like um so trustee Capel.
Here.
Trustee Ruffin. I heard you say here, but I see you on here. Yeah, trustee Clark.
Yeah.
And trustee Lim.
Here.
Okay, and I am here as well um. Is there any reordering of any agenda items for open session? And if not, may I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Uh roll call vote trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Trustee Lim.
Aye.
And an aye vote for me, thank you. Um Catalina, is there any public comment? On non-agenda.
There is no public comment.
All right, then let's jump into our first item of new business, which is to review and consider requests of the L A County Auditor's Controller's Office of a waiver of the levy of special taxes of Altona Library District C F D for the properties affected by the fire. Would there be any presentation on this? Okay.
I mean, I'm happy just to to share that we received the letter and all of the documentation that's in the agenda package from the county. I can't remember exactly when, but it was either early last week or the end of the week before that. The deadline to respond is this coming Friday, which is why we organized this special meeting. Um, as you can see from the report that was put together by bond councilor Minal Shaw, uh it the preliminary numbers are in all of the parcels listed are three thousand ten um parcels that were reported at that point in time. Uh, we're not sure because that's preliminary if that is sufficient information um in terms of what the the true fiscal impact will be. But it is up to the board today to decide whether or not we're gonna choose to, you will choose to um continue to collect that that special tax lien, waive the the special tax lien or waive a a percentage of it. So um in speaking with bond counsel and the information also provided in the report that we're in a fiscal um agent agreement uh that requires us to levy and collect the special tax. It is the recommendation by staff and our attorney that we not waive those collections, but um again, that's a decision for the board to make. Minal is here. I don't know if you want to add anything, Minal, or and we're here to answer any other questions the board may have.
Um then we have a recommendation by the staff in the district. Can I get a motion to move on that recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Hang on, sorry, real quick, we don't, just point of order, we need to say what the Oh, what the what the thing is, yeah, so so I think that what I hear is um um motion to um to not waive the collection of the special tax, okay.
Yep, so can I get a motion to move forward with the district's recommendate, the staff and district's recommendation that the board deny the county's request for the waiver of the levy and collection of the special taxes within the C F D for fiscal year twenty four twenty five? And do I, can I, do I just continue with your our motion?
Can I just, can I just clarify real quick? I just want to be real clear, so my reading of the letter is they're asking what we intend to do. They're not actually requesting that we waive it, but based upon legal counsels recommend, legal counsels recommending that we not waive it because of various consequences if we were to do that.
Right, um un- under this, the special taxes for the community when the district issued the bonds, they entered into an agreement called the Fiscal Agent Agreement. Pursuant to the Fiscal Agent Agreement, the district um is required and has covenanted that it will levy and collect special taxes um in an amount sufficient to pay debt service annually. If um this board chooses to uh waive the special tax uh levy, it um could cause a breach under that covenant and that agreement.
Thank you. And Minal, what would potential uh results of that breach entail?
Um, the bond owners have uh various um item, i- it would be considered a default first under the Fiscal Agent Agreement, and they have any legally available remedies uh to them, and and that could include, you know, um drawing from the project fund um and using that to pay debt service, it could be lawsuits against the um district compelling them to collect those amounts. There there's just a broad range of um items that bond owners have available to them to um initiate lawsuits um and force the district to collect those monies.
Thank you. So yeah, I just, I want to reiterate Jason's point that we haven't been, there's not a request to waive. L A County is saying you have the option to do nothing and collect levy and collect your taxes as normal, to waive some portion of those taxes or to waive them in entirety. But there's not a specific request from L A County to do anything, it's just here are the set of options you have.
So then, just to clarify then, so then the motion on the floor would be to not waive any of the levy of special taxes within the C F D?
Yeah, it would be the district declines to waive any of the, yeah, any of the special tax levy.
And did we, did we have a second already?
Is, sorry, is that, that is, is that your motion? Okay, and then Boone, your second, digging?
Yes, we had Jason and then Boone, so we'll do a roll call vote trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Trustee Lim.
Aye.
And I vote for me, thank you. Now, okay, moving on to our next agenda item, we have to it was on page, let me go back to six. We um this next agenda item is to review and consider requests of County of Los Angeles Auditor Controllers of waiver of the levy of special taxes within Altona Library District's Measure A Special Parcel Tax. The parcel tax for properties affected by the fire.
Hello again, so um the, again, it's it's in the the title of the agenda item, but the difference with this is we often refer to it as Measure A, the parcel tax that was voted on in twenty fourteen that we collect each year. Um, actually sunsets at the end of this fiscal year, but this is um the county reached out to see if the board would like to, again, continue to collect that tax this year, waive it or waive a percentage of it. Um, I will just say that the special assessment or this direct assessment is approximately a fourth of our annual budget. Um, and again, when we received this documentation from the county, it only included three thousand ten parcels. Um, the numbers I've seen out of L A County Fire are that were over seven thousand just single family homes. That doesn't even include commercial uh multifamily and other structures as well, or parcels that could be affected with this. So although Sarah and N B S put together the number that you see um in the staff report, that may not be the entire amount because it was based on those preliminary numbers. So um happy to answer any questions, but again, that's that parcel tax that we've been collecting that makes up roughly a fourth of the service and operational funding that we get.
Nikki, is there an option uh to defer, like, is it possible to extend Measure A, or is this uh uh kind of a a gate?
No, so when we developed the ballot measure in twenty twenty, we knew that we would have to go back out to renew the tax in twenty twenty four. So at the time, the board chose to form a Community Facilities District and and made that decision so that it could the way the C F D was written was that it would be able to raise the capital funds we needed for the building projects. And then when the parcel tax sunsetted in fiscal year twenty four twenty five, the special tax could also make up the difference of the service and operational funding. So the special tax was actually, that other line is meant to make up the difference of the parcel tax. But again, this decision today on this tax is a one-time only decision because we wouldn't be um collecting that tax next year anyway. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So can someone um help me understand, like, when uh when does this actually like hit where someone would have to, where the the payment would come? Is that in the ap- in April? When is that, when it, when will it actually impact the a person?
It's impossible to know, but for a lot of people, property taxes, um including this one, are part of your mortgage. So a lot of this has already been collected and it's just sitting with mortgage companies. Um, there are several relief options that are available to homeowners. Um, the governor's office has issued a one-year extension for payment of property tax, so there are no late fees if you, for example, you know, we levy this tax and somebody doesn't pay their property taxes, there is no penalty uh per that executive order. There is an option for homeowners to have a reassessment, um which is retroactive to the date of the fires. Um and, you know, these funds, we don't, we don't know, obviously, but in many cases are sitting with mortgage companies, so it will be up to the mortgage company to decide whether they want to pay on time, whether they want to take advantage of that extension, like, it's not clear how that extension granted to homeowners affects the obligations that mortgage companies have. I don't know, Nikki, do we know? They have
Well, I would, I would also say that, like, like this parcel tax, it was based per parcel, so I think the number last year for like a um a single family home was like sixty eight dollars. So I would even venture to say, and Christie, please correct me if I'm wrong, half of that has already been collected through the first payment. So it it would, I believe it would be retroactive as well. So like if we waived it because it's the full year, they would get that back as a tax, not some, it wouldn't like waiving it, it would be retroactive, I believe.
So is April or September the final? I don't, bill, if you will, for for the Measure A? April, I know.
April.
Yeah, so the the um taxes are due in November and April. So like I said, if, you know, I don't know if they pay the parcel tax upfront, the full amount, or if it's split into two, but like half of it's already been collected theoretically, so it would be that. But again, from the paperwork that we've received, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, Christie, um like, we've already received half, like forty percent of the taxes right now, so to me, whatever was paid of the parcel tax, if it's waived, it would have to be reimbursed.
I mean, the escrow account for insurance and taxes for my mortgage has like several thousand dollars sitting in it right now. Right, so
Do you think that's, do you think that's right, Christie? Like, it would be retroactive to what was collected already.
My understanding is retroactive and the county would not respond on whether or not they would pull those funds that have been advanced to the district, forty percent. So you're right, Ted, the first payment was due in November, not everybody pays in November, some are December. Um, somewhere along, but the county has already advanced forty percent, they don't give you the fifty percent because not everybody pays. So I think there is a chance that if you're retroactively reassessed, that some of those dollars would go back. Or we need to be prepared for that, yes.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it seems, it just, it seems to me just the timing of everything and like honestly, the tax system, the timing of the tax system doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, but it it seems to me like the real impact on folks, you know, I think the majority of this board, you know, are paying mortgages, so we're talking about ourselves too. It is gonna be felt come, come September and, right, because if, you know, I don't know if everybody on here is, has theirs impounded, right, but just looking at my account, the amount that's impounded, like, the money's already there to make the spring payment. To que- I can tell you right now, it ain't gonna be there to make the September payment, right, so in in my mind, if 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 the the spring payment is the final one on Measure A, it it doesn't make sense to waive that because it's not, it it doesn't, I don't see where it would be a benefit to the many thousands of families who have lost their homes. Especially when the libraries is, you know, the community is starting to reopen, some people are starting to come back, like there's gonna be a desperate need to have these libraries open and operating and sharing space with all the agencies that are going to be helping with recovery. And I just, I don't feel like we should be voting on things to take a significant fi- financial hit if it's not gonna actually help the the folks who've been impacted by this.
Well, and I I think not only not represent a meaningful form of assistance to people who have been impacted a meaningful harm to the district, like, we know that, you know, the special tax is a quarter of the budget. We know that most of our budget is personnel, like, the people, it's not the district, are what, like, yeah, we have two buildings, but it's, you know, our staff that provide services and make programs happen, I mean, it's what this pays for, and I think that, you know, this is gonna be a long process to figure out, but I don't think that in the short term waiving the tax will help provide meaningful relief to homeowners or help the district um because of the, because of the timing of how these get collected.
Yeah, I think the the kind of small issue with this one is just that it's a, it's a blanket relief statement where we're absolving everyone um from contributing uh if, even if they want it to, right? And I almost wish like there was a fourth option that said if if you want the relief, so be it, you know, please submit a very small statement and then you will be relieved, right? Because I I I do understand that um everybody's situation is different, you know, this is a situation where um if you have insurance, uh you're in a better state, but there's a lot of people um who didn't, and this could be, you know, not a major financial hardship, but it's something, and I also understand that because of this, you know, there's a significant portion of the community that has been spread to the formal winds, right, who are not here anymore. So I really feel like this is one where if only we could have, you know, kind of like a checkbox somewhere where I want to continue paying or I don't, this is the one where um it would make the most sense. But we don't have that checkbox, so.
We don't have that checkbox, but I do feel like there are I don't know, there are options for folks, you know what I mean, like, you don't have to pay if you don't want to and there's not a financial penalty for at least a year. So not, not saying that like that's the same as as what you're wishing existed, because I wish that existed too, but I just there are other, like, we can't provide those additional mechanisms, but I do think there are some additional mechanisms for folks. Not that that, like, fixes the problem or the scale of what people are having to deal with in any way, shape or form, but
I'm when I reflect on that, that resonates with me in terms of, you know, I think about, you know, I'm in a similar situation uh where, you know, our our mortgage is impounded, so it's it's du- it's, you know, it's a done deal, I don't, we can't account for you know, how many people that exists for, but I am comforted by the option, you know, that that there are some options for folks, right, that there's the the year of where you don't, you know, you don't have to pay it, um, you know, that break that the governor has given, like, I'm comforted by the fact that it doesn't seem like it is destructive to for me to not waive it, but it could be potentially impactful on the, on the library. Um, you know, and coming back, I I do agree that, you know, even just being on social media, like, there is already a buzz about the library and you know, as a community space um and the need for it as a community space, and so I think that that is going to be important, I think it when I, you know, I was on a hike the other day and someone was like, your library survived, you know, like, that is hitting with people that, you know, of all of this destruction, the libraries are there, and I think that's important. And I want to I wanna respect that also, so yeah, that's my thought on the matter.
So i- in the same way that we had exemptions for Measure Measure Z, um is there any way we could institute it here, or would that just be just way too onerous procedurally?
The exemption has to be filed with the county ahead of the fiscal year. So that it's
Right.
I mean, unless you, like, the remedy is writing a check or something to people.
Yeah, this is just, you know, these are extraordinary circumstances, right, so it's just, yeah.
Well, and and one thing that I think is worth saying as well is like, obviously, it's been what, not even a month since January seventh? Um, and we just, there's just a lot of information we don't have yet. Um, there's a lot we don't know, and I know that we are in conversations with L A County, with the State of California, with lots of other folks about how to try to you know, backfill any shortfalls in revenue that the district may experience because of the loss of property taxes um. And I I think we just need a little more time to bring more information back to the board on what that might look like, you know, we just we just don't have enough data at this point to really know that much about what a potential fiscal impact would look like on our general funding
Mm-hmm.
for services and operations.
Um this might be a silly question, but um are there takebacks when it comes to this, right, so if we click the box that says we are not gonna waive or we are gonna waive, like, and we get more information, like, like, thinking about the numbers that are in the packet, we know it's not accurate, but when, you know, to your point, Katie, if there is more information like that decision is made, you can't uncheck the box. Am I, is that correct?
We can't uncheck the box, but we could presumably make different decisions for the following fiscal year, right, so this is twenty four twenty five, most of which has passed, we're in what, almost the final quarter of the fiscal year, so we're sort of three quarters of the way through. Um, so when we do get new information, that information most likely will be information that would guide decision-making about fiscal year twenty five twenty six.
We will need to make a decision and there's no other discussion. Um, is there anyone who would like to make a motion uh either way to waive or to not waive? Um, let me go back to the specific wording. Um. Okay, um. Yeah, so is there anyone that would like to make a motion to waive or not waive the levy of the special taxes within the Altadena Library District's Measure A Special Parcel Tax for properties impacted by the fires?
I mean, I'll, I'll make the motion to decline to waive the measuring.
Tax as a, as a measure of the was, was my question is, am I allowed, I'm not allowed to make motions, right? Or am I?
You can as a like, last resort, but generally it's like frowned.
Okay, I didn't think so, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll make, I'll make the motion to decline to waive um the Measure A Special Parcel Tax for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to decline to waive. It's been properly seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Capel.
Aye.
Trustee Ruffin.
Aye.
Trustee Clark.
Aye.
Trustee Lim.
I will say nay, just to show that this is not an easy decision.
Absolutely. And I will say aye.
Vote nay with even spirit.
Yep.
This whole thing sucks. Like, it all sucks. It totally sucks that we have to like, like, there's no good decision outcome here. And yeah, it's just, yeah, it sucks.
Yep.
This is what therapy is for.
Yeah.
Liquid therapy.
Well, I would, I would say, and I think Christie would concur, that we appreciate how thoughtful and thorough the board is in all the decisions that are made. I mean, I think you've really taken a lot of things into consideration. Um, it's not an easy decision, but I think we have the right five people making them.
Thank you, Nikki.
Completely agree.
Yeah.
Thank you, Christie. Thank you for that. Everyone, I know that was really difficult. Um, but yeah, I agree. I appreciate you're willing to make challenging decisions. Um, okay, then let's move forward in our agenda. Is there any uh proposed future agenda items?
Um, not a proposed future agenda items, maybe more, it's more of a point of information, um just so that it's on the record. So um because it's an ad hoc committee, it was formed by executive action by the chair, but I just wanted to note for the record that we have formed an ad hoc committee comprised of myself and trustee Ruffin, which we're calling the Ad hoc Crisis and Recovery Committee. Um, and the hope is that that, that committee can house some of these conversations around, you know, finding alternative sources of funding, figuring out what's going on with revenue, figuring out how we can sort of solve the district's problems, um such as they, such as they are and continue to provide programs and services to the community. Um, so we'll have a report in the February board package, but just wanted to note the existence of that committee.
Thank you. Trustee Clark, can you, for the record, repeat the name of it again?
Yeah, it's an ad hoc committee and it is the Crisis and Recovery Committee.
Thank you.
And then, can I just ask, I know this came up at the last meeting, but I'm assuming we're gonna be ready to go with an agenda item to get some like legal input just on the status of all of us as elected officials and being displaced and what the impact of that is.
Yeah, I did talk to our attorney and he basically said, as long as there is intent to move back to the district that you are representing, and, and I think there's a, especially in this circumstance, there's a lot of time that can be given to make that decision, um then it's okay. But I, I think for right now, I wouldn't be too concerned. He said like six to twelve months, but I do think like, if at some point, a trustee were to decide that they're not going to return to their district and, and makes that clear, we would have to then appoint someone else to that seat.
Yeah, I trust everybody on this board to, to do the right thing as far as that's concerned. I just want to make sure we're not going into any, but if the outside make.
Yeah, Catalina and I can clarify more, you know, I just think there's gonna be a grace period, like, he said six to twelve months, you know, and who knows, like, you s- you've seen it up there. Like, how quickly are people going to be able to move back? I think like, it could even be longer than that. But I don't think you can say like, okay, I'm gonna permanently move somewhere else and make that clear and then still serve on the board, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, can I clarify? What, what is that? Six to twelve months is not even uh.
I think, I think that's like generally how it would go. This is a very different situation than I think a lot of other, you know, if someone has to leave for a certain amount of time, but, you know, I think this is an extenuating circumstance and I'm sure we could make the argument that trustees would have more time.
I hope so, because like, my house burned down, so there's nowhere to go back to, because I'm a renter, right? So like, I have all the intent in the world to come back to Altadena, but like, there, you know, to what? So.
So, well, it, but it is your intention, so.
It is absolutely my intention. I have no sense of like what that timeline will, will be, right? You know, but yeah. Everyone hold on to that key word.
Could you establish a P O box to serve its intent?
Uh, I think just stating that you intend to move back to the district that you were elected to represent is sufficient at this point.
We can get a P O box as soon as they rebuild the post office.
There's no P, exactly, the post office in the same shape as my living room, so, yeah. Okay. Thank you for asking about that, Jason. I forgot.
Yeah, thank you. I forgot.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I will call us adjourned at three thirty eight PM.